Start it.
That starts.
Good to meet you, by the way. Got to check over soon.
Chris Tadlak, good to meet you.
This is Chris. Use the mic. Great need to just press that button. Then you get real lights and then your life.
Thank you.
Welcome everybody to our Monday, May fifteenth meeting. Can we just stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. We do have, obviously, a pretty large crowd tonight because over the last several weeks, we've been doing a lot of work in interviewing for the different boards that were at open positions. And most of those folks are here this evening. So, you know, to all the people that had applied, and I can't tell you, it was really great to see the turnout of a number of people that were interested in different positions. And the best part is, you know, if you were looking for one and maybe you didn't get it, they were just saying, you know what? Tie me into something. I want to help. I want to be part of the village. I want to be able to, you know, do the right thing, do my community service. So it was really good to see. Before we step off, I also want to thank Leo from Metro Sound Systems for his ability to give us these microphone system speakers that everybody's been crying about, and including myself. So we have them. This might not be the permanent system, but at the end of the day, it's a great help for you guys to hear us. So with that, we're going to move forward. First step will be is to do the resolutions of appointing the different board members. I'll turn that section over to Donna. And we're going to go kind of board by board. And then after one, I can do the appointments of the two trustees after that. Yeah.
Okay, I would like to make a resolution to authorize the appointments of ZBA members, Bill Carroll and Patrice Gesman.
Is there more of a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? One in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a resolution to authorize the appointments of the architectural review board members, Jeffrey Laddell, Anne Mamalidi, Stephen Tully, Tully, and Ted Alloa.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? One in favor? Motion passes.
I would like to make a resolution to authorize the appointments of the ethics board, Jolie Zara, Ken Schwartz, Pat Mitchell, Jamie White, and Jackie Budakowski.
More of a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? One in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So for the trustees, typically, they're the mayor's appointment, like the other boards. We wanted to be able to have other, you know, opportunities for anybody who's interested in the position. So we had a number of folks really come out. And we spent the last couple of weeks, again, going over this. So again, thank you for everybody's interest and participation. Again, we greatly appreciate it. So with that, I would like to make a motion to appoint Steve Presser and Vernon Coleman as trustees to fill the vacancies of two existing trustee positions that will expire February of next year. Does the motion have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions, comments? One in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Great. So at this point, congratulations to everybody. What we'll do now is we'll just go through the formal process of pristine judgment. Our clerk will do the oath for each individual person. So it's logged in the book. And one just note, too, for everybody who just appointed from the boards. One thing that we'll be working on next, at the next meeting, will be the staggered positions of those positions. Because it was the tracking of this when people would leave and then new people would be hired or, you know, appointed. There was, the dates don't appear to be too accurate. So we're doing a little bit digging. But at the end of the day, at the next meeting, we'll have those appointments and then we'll have the years staggered. So there's no overlaps and everything will be square away at the end of those particular terms.
And stagger on payment boards as well? But you're going to have your own meetings?
Correct. Yeah.
So when everybody knows the way New York State has it set up, based on five-year terms, every year, one position expires. So either we need somebody new to replace them on that board or we reappoint them. But that's how that works. That's why they'll be staggering.
So for all the new members, for the new boards that did not exist at the ARB and the ethics, because nobody's being replaced there, won't have your meeting? You don't either draw straws?
Either that or we'll potentially...
We have to assign it.
Yeah, we'll do the appointment from the board level here. And we'll let you basically know when your term will expire on all those boards.
But those boards will pick their own chair.
Correct. Okay. All right, can you start it? The trustees, please.
Steve Presser. Raise your right hand if you could after me. I, Steve Presser.
I, Steve Presser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A village trustee.
A village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Okay, next would be Vernon.
You ready? I, Vernon Coleman.
I, Vernon Coleman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A village trustee.
A village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Patrice?
Stand up for our ZBA. Zoning Board of Appeals, please.
I, Patrice Gesman.
I, Patrice Gesman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of zoning Board of Appeals member.
Of zoning Board of Appeals member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We have them.
Bill Carroll? I, Bill Carroll.
I, Bill Carroll.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of zoning Board of Appeals member.
Of zoning Board of Appeals member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Jackie?
Jackie Budakowski.
I, Jackie Budakowski.
I, Jackie Budakowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Pat? I, Pat Mitchell.
I, Pat Mitchell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Jolie? Ready? Make sure I can hear you after me. I, Jolie Zara.
I, Jolie Zara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Jamie?
I, Jamie White. I, Jamie White. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the constitutions. That I will support the constitution of the United States. The United States. And the state of New York. And the state of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of Code of Ethics Board member. Of Code of Ethics Board member. The best of my ability. The best of my ability. Congratulations.
Ready? I, Kenneth Schwartz.
I, Kenneth Schwartz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
Of Code of Ethics Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeffrey?
I, Jeffrey Laddell.
I, Jeffrey Laddell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Architectural Review Board member.
Of Architectural Review Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thanks.
Stephen Tully?
I, Stephen Tully.
I, Stephen Tully.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Architectural Review Board member.
Of Architectural Review Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Ted?
Sorry.
Okay, Ted.
How's it going? Good. Ujua. Ujua.
Ujua?
Yeah.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
I, Ted Ujua.
I, Ted Ujua.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Architectural Review Board member.
Architectural Review Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
There is another member that will be part of the Architectural Review Board who is not present today, and that's Chris Tadlak. And Mamalidi will also be on that board. Probably not in, or maybe... That's everybody. Wait, wait, wait.
Yes. Yes. Should I repeat after me?
Okay.
I, Anne Mamalidi.
I, Anne Mamalidi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Architectural Review Board member.
Of an Architectural Review Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And congratulations again to everybody. And again, thank you very, very much for participating, stepping up, and doing a little civil service. It's great. Really great to have that participation. So with that, we'll move on to a public hearing that we have for Local Law Number Two of 2023, the local law entitled "The Local Law Revising and Extending Six-Month Moratorium Prohibiting the Review and Approval of Certain Land Development Applications in the Village of Washingtonville." Do I have a motion to hold in the public hearing?
I will make that motion.
I'm second, please.
I'm the second to motion.
This gives the audience an opportunity to ask any questions in regards to the moratorium. If you have any comments, if you just give us your first name, last name, and address. Any questions, board members? No? The information has been posted online for, I want to say, probably a week or so once we had the redline copy and it was going back and forth for review. But we wanted to show the redline copy that was out on the, on our website. So if anybody needed to review it, whatever, it was out there. So with that, no comment. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I will make that motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I will second that motion.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. We'll move into a resolution. At the meeting of Village Board of the Village of Washingtonville, New York, was convened on May fifteenth at 7:00 PM. The final resolution was duly offered in second to wit resolution adopting provision and extension of Village Land Use Moratorium. Whereas the Village Board of Village Washingtonville previously adopted Local Law Number One, establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of certain land development applications within the village. And whereas the newly established Village Board then retained a new planner to assist the village comprehensive planning, zoning amendments, and has also retained new legal counsel. And whereas the newly established Village Board has reviewed such local law and desired to amend and extend the land use moratorium in the Village of Washingtonville, now therefore be resolved by the Village Board as follows. "All whereas paragraphs incorporated herein by reference, thou shalt be set forth in full." Section Two, the Village Board hereby adopted Local Law Number... Is that two? Two for 2023. "The Local Law Revising and Extending a Six-Month Moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of certain land development applications in the Village of Washingtonville" at Page Two, to Schedule A. Section Three, the Village Clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law into the minutes of said meeting and in the local lawbook of the Village of Washingtonville and give due notice of the adoption of said local law by filing the local law in the Office of Secretary of State in the state of New York. Section Four, the Mayor and any officer or employee consultant as directed by the Mayor is hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Section Five, this resolution shall be effective immediately. And question of adoption for the outgoing resolution was duly put up to a vote. When the results are, make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'm second to that motion.
I'm second. Any questions, comments? One in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, with two extensions. Okay. Mr. Attorney, is that satisfactory?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at the portion of any public comment from the audience, if anybody wants to talk about anything in general. Why, crowd connect? Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to congratulate the new trustees and all the people that volunteered in all the open positions. Looks like a good group.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Good job.
Wonderful. Thanks. Okay, without further comment, we'll continue with the agenda. Just points of discussion at this moment. Under the Police Department, there was a DASNY grant for $50,000 for a UTV and trailer. That process is moving forward. The, I believe we signed off on everything. Chris, I'm sorry, Brian. We signed off on everything. So we're just waiting to hear back from the state on the application and potential order and delivery of the UTV and trailer. The other item is discussion or just updates on our chip funding, which is basically for our roads. There's several programs that have been added in the last couple of years. There's a chip program, a Pave New York, a EWR, and a POP, which is K or P holes. And the EWR, I believe, has to do with winter... Chris, you got it? Do you know what that is? EWR? Okay. 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 So the good news is, is that from our funding that we have currently out there, and it's been an accumulation of several years of money that's been allocated by New York State for Washingtonville, our current balance is $403,996. And we also have $100,000 that was budgeted that we'll need to look into to make sure we can secure those funds within our operating budget. So several of the roads, again, that we're looking at is Ahearn, North Street, Lincoln, Emerson, Seed Cord. Two little extensions of Peacock and Mockingbird. We believe we'll be able to do those in-house with the assistance of the town of Blooming Grove. So potentially, we can save some money with those particular smaller projects. And we're also, to save some money, we're also going to be reaching out to other communities like we've done in the past. And we kind of time-share trucks. So if Chester's doing a project, we would loan them a couple of trucks, like everybody would in the county. So it just takes care of those big costs of trucking and hauling the asphalt. So that's kind of where we are at the moment. We are out to... Tilcon is the company that has the state bid. We received some information back. We're getting some pricing on drainage work that needs to be done on North Street. So once we have all these numbers put together, we'll be able to start to schedule some of this work.
Doesn't North Street need some more sampling, too? Decide what's going to be done?
They're doing, I think, all of it and with the drainage work that needs to be done, so yeah.
So, and so the public knows you can't just throw pavement over pavement. They got to drill down and check and see what's underneath to see if it's suitable to repave over or do they have to scrape off layers and stuff like that? It adds to the expense, but it makes the roads last longer.
Great. Any questions on that, anybody? Next one is from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. They've come out with an announcement for $425 million will be available for water infrastructure projects through the Water Infrastructure Investment Act, WIIA, and Intraminuscule Grants, IMG. This is comparatively higher than the previous year, which was only $279 million that was awarded in 2022. So we are, our plan with some of this money is for rehabbing some of our wells. We have two wells that are located over at High Grove, which is off of Ahearn Boulevard, where the Raiders had built the High Grove Development. where the Raiders had built the High Grove Development. They put in two wells, and we'll be investigating those as far as the amount of gallons we can get out of those wells, and if they're sufficient, which we believe one is definitely sufficient, one might be on the lower end, but if we can obtain grant money, we'll develop both those wells and add that to our already existing water system. One of the things in the village that we can say, water-wise, we always say we have enough water, but our wells are aquifer wells, which means they're only about thirty-eight to forty-some odd feet deep. And we can get hundreds of thousands of gallons of water out of these particular aquifer. But if, as you know, when things dry up, so does the aquifer. So we need some deep rock bed wells that can help support the village in an event that, you know, the water levels go, you know, continue to go down on a well. So we'll be applying for those grants and any rehab and building that we might need at our well site that we currently have next to the Cross Creek from the high school. Any questions? We also had a project that was started, it was when Bull Road was basically wiped out from, I guess, twenty twenty-one, Ida or Ida was the storm. That project is pretty much complete from a road project, one open item that we need to finish is on Woodfield. They ended up rerouting sewer lines to make it more efficient, and I believe there was actually a sewer line that was running through a pipe, which is not regulated by D E C anymore. Back then it probably was. So at the end of the day, we, the Woodfield plant that we have is going to get installed two larger motors so they can handle the influence of wastewater and products faster and get them down the street to the, eventually to the sewer plant. To get, so the total project too, by the way, for the FEMA reimbursement that the village had already received the money on was in the neighborhood of about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We are still actually with that money as well. We're also trying to figure out where some of that money went because there is a contractor that has not been paid, and we're trying to investigate where that Bull Road FEMA money was allocated in the budget. So we'll keep you updated on that portion of the project. On beautification, now questions to the board, did we go out to look for beautification today?
We did.
We did not, okay. So one more committee, potentially, for beautification. And is this, yes?
It went in the paper for the beautification.
I'm sorry?
It went into the newspaper looking for beautification numbers.
Oh, it did, okay.
You didn't really get it?
Okay. Well, we have a couple of volunteers that have kind of stepped up as of late, just, you know, given me a call. And actually, Siobhan from our downtown flower shop, she is interested, she's a fifteen year certified florist, she's been working on all the large flower pots that are in the, in the village area now. So we've done a lot of plantings there, kind of like a spring till fall, a lot of bulbs and annuals and stuff like that, so hopefully we can keep those potted plants out there for some length of time. But she will be interesting, if no one wants to step up, she would chair the committee. And we have some other folks that would like to participate in doing flowers and decorating things like that, so.
So I want to shout out to the D P W because they go out and they water those. I saw the trucks out today.
Yeah.
Especially after a hot weekend.
And volunteers.
Okay. Can I just note on that? Okay, so onto a couple of correspondences. We've been putting out over the airwaves today and the other day regarding a mobile department motor vehicle. That vehicle will be on site here tomorrow from ten to twelve and then one to three thirty. They can do anything motor vehicle wise for you. The only thing you can't do is take a written examination. So it'll be parked in the parking lot and it's accessible. Received an email, and I thought it was a pretty cool idea, so we tapped into it and they called right away and said, when do you want it? So.
So if you're looking to travel this summer, you need an enhanced driver's license, now's your chance to get it.
Yeah. Next is a resolution authorized to schedule a public hearing regarding the amendment of chapter thirty-four of the village code smoking policy for June fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Chris, do I have to read this resolution for that?
You do not.
Okay, thank you. Do you have discussion?
Well, I just want people to know, not just the parks, it's any village area, anything owned by the village.
So that smoking does not only apply to cigarettes, it applies to cannabis, I believe, as well?
It's cannabis, it's vaping.
Vaping. Anything that evens a white cloud, is that correct, Council?
I mean, I don't think it applies to you have talcum powder and throw it in the air with other than that, yes, it does.
Oh, cigarettes, you know, cannabis, any tobacco product, vaping, anything that has an adverse impact on health, a growing, a general problem.
And that's the general code of what's being updated, so you're aware of it. It'll be online as well for your review, if you're interested. Next is a resolution to authorize many a town and excavating to upgrade the Woodfield Loop Station's immersiveable pumps at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars per the Delaware engineering plans. Motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Comments, questions? If none, all in favor? Motion passes three zero with two extensions. Next is a resolution to authorize the rehab, and I'll stress, emergency rehab of well number three not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars by Lane Company. Have a motion, please?
No, sir.
Second?
Second.
Conversation. So again, folks, this is one of our wells that are down, down across the street from Mace Field. We have two wells that are the primary wells. This one needs to be maintenance because there's screening at the bottom of the well, and it's becoming clogged with potential debris, and it needs to be basically cleaned out. We're doing that now under somewhat of an emergency situation because we don't want to get into summer months if this well is not functioning at a hundred percent. So we're being a little more aggressive on this particular one. And this well was supposed to have been rehabbed actually last year, but for whatever reason it was not, so we're addressing it now. And we had to, any other discussion, questions?
That's the one by the school you're talking about?
Yes. Yes, across the street. No, the one by the monument is a low producer, it's maybe twenty-five gallons per minute, is that correct, Chris? Do you think it?
Well, the thing is, I live across the water.
So that water, we're waiting for a park to come in to finish that well, and then that well will be activated, and it'll also add to our water source. Yeah, they have a filter system in there now, and there's a tank to do like some type of separation. It's been okay by the department now. Julie?
Just wondering if you heard anything where we just had billing go out for water and sewer?
Yep.
I know up behind Woodfield, up there, that housing complex has a lot of really high water bills. One person in particular, I know, she just got billed again for over six hundred dollars. I'm sure she already put in something. But in any case, have we looked into that further, and is that going to be, you know, drying up one of our wells somewhere if we can't find what, you know, if there's leaks or what, you know, what the overview says?
Well, there's a bunch of different factors as we've been diving into this within the last month and a half, and Susan has become our, excuse my, she's our water witch. And so we found a number of different issues, and she could step in here. However, we've got software issues, data entry issues, different meters that are not responding correctly, hardware issues with the meters and devices, and we're working on all of these feverishly every day to get caught up and straighten this, straighten out the mess. The, you want to add anything?
No, I would just say if any resident feels that their water bill is not in line with their past usage, please reach out to me at swolski@washingtonville-ny.com. Every single complaint is personally addressed. There are three or four different authentication factors that we go through when it's brought to my attention to make sure we are doing the best for the residents. Some are true issues, some are, you know, just usage, you know, especially now with the springtime coming, but we do want people to get accurate bills, and we are trying our best to address them. I have a stack about this thick that I'm working my way through. And Chris has been great from the D P W. If there's a question and if we're not sure, he will go back out and reread the meter just to make sure for a third time that it's correct.
One of the things that's going to help us down the road too, at the last meeting, we talked about the Edmunds Financial System. One of the things we'll be able to do with that system is, right now, our process is manual, so what we're going to end up doing is creating interfaces to these applications so that the process of manual entry is going to go away. So that will definitely help our situation tenfold. I mean, examples, one of the biggest issues that, and we're addressing this too with the squad that goes down and reads the meters, we had an abundance of estimated meter readings, and the calculation on the estimated meter readings were very low. So if you average ten thousand a quarter, and they just happen for some reason to do an estimated bill, it showed up at, say, three thousand gallons. And once we started, we saw a pattern with this, we went into the system, and there's a table in there, and we increased it from, it might have been thirty percent, for example, and we increased that number to ninety percent. So really what that means at the end of the day, if your quarterly average is around ten, that estimated reading now is not going to be super low, it's going to be pretty close to that ten thousand gallon per quarter usage that you're, that you're doing. So that when you get that bill after an estimated reading, it's not that high, it's not going to be exuberant. So we're trying to, you know, address, address all of this, and it's really case by case basis what we're dealing with.
So when the company that does the reading has been put on notice for the next reading, nobody is allowed to put in an estimated reading without Tom's approval. So everybody should be getting their meters read fully and not just relying on couldn't get to the meter or the signal.
So it sounds like a lot of it could be data and not just water leaks that were wasting water?
Correct.
Okay.
The one thing too for High Grove that I noticed when we were walking that area is, all of them, I believe, have underground water sprinkler systems for their lawns. So that, if used, can be a tremendous amount of water at the end of the day. The few people that did come up to us and mentioned, you know, high bills and et cetera, they'll be addressed, we just need the information. What we're looking for is, you know, like the past bill, the current bill, and, you know, if you have something that's after that, so we can look at the gallons and try to figure it all out, because there's been some that are just off the charts, and it doesn't make any sense where, how in the world are you going to be using a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand gallons of water? Your house would float away. You can't hide that kind of water. So that's, that's what we're struggling with at the moment, but we're getting to all of it, so just, you know, bear with us, but if you have a problem, send us the documentation, we'll be happy to dive into it and help you. Okay? Did we vote on that? I don't think we did. Did we vote? Yes, we did. On the rehab of well?
Yes.
All right, the next resolution is to authorize July four ever fireworks aimed to perform fireworks displays for the village of Washingtonville on seven nine, which is a Friday night, at a cost not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Have a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero with two extensions.
There will be a ban that now that is being under by the events committee.
He'll build the blues or something?
He'll build the parade there.
So come out to Vern Allen, bring your lawn chairs?
And there's a randy as well.
The next day?
Yep.
Chief, do we need to meet up with those, with the contractor on site?
It sounds a date like next month, yeah, early next month, we set something up.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to coordinate that, or?
Sure, I'll need.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you have the, what the village contact people?
I'll get it from you Wednesday.
Great, thanks. Next is, we have a sign permit application for child time learning center, so.
Our last one, they go to the A R B after this.
Yeah, that's right. So a resolution to authorize the installation of a new three foot by seven foot monument of sign with a height of six feet using solar light fixtures for child time learning center. We had a chance to review the sign, it's been reviewed by the building department, they had no ill comments, so if there's no hesitation, have a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Now, second, please.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
I was just to make sure the audience knows, this is where English Rose was. It's got new ownership, so they're changing the sign in front of it, that's all.
Thank you, yes. Next resolution is a resolution to restore the salary of mayor position back to fifteen thousand. So the resolution, a meeting at the village board, March, village of Washingtonville, New York, was conveyed on May fifteenth, seven P M. The resolution was duly offered in second. Resolution to restore previous salary of mayor, whereas the salary of the elected mayor of the village of Washingtonville has been fifteen thousand up till February twenty-third of twenty twenty-three, at which point it was reduced by the prior administration to five thousand dollars, whereas the village board desires to restore the salary of the village mayor to the prior amount of fifteen per year. And whereas pursuant to New York State law five dash five twenty-four, the village board authorizes to make additional appropriations or increase in existing appropriations by fund transfers, expended balances from contingencies, from appropriate unreserved fund balances, or from unanticipated revenue within a fund. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, that whereas clause are incorporated herein and set forth in full, section two, the village board hereby restores the prior mayoral salary and authorizes the increase in such salary for the elected position village mayor to fifteen, consistent with the salary paid in twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and such increases hereby adopted, no pro no to April third, twenty twenty-three, the commencement of the village fiscal year. Section three, in order to fluctuate the such increase, village mayor salary, the following budget transfers are hereby authorized pursuant to village law five dash five twenty-four, ten thousand from account eight, seven, one, four, zero, four, five, Vern Allen Park Rehab to account A one, two, one, zero, one, mayor personal services. Section four, the village clerk, village treasurer, or any other person responsible for the budgetary transfers, is hereby authorized to take any action and all actions necessary to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Section five, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Important motion?
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three, two.
And y'all get a chief, because this man puts in seventy, seventy-five hours a week here.
This was always a part-time job, a mayor position, until we see you be full-time.
Thank you. Our next resolution is to authorize the expenditures not to exceed six thousand dollars for DJ tents, chairs, porta potties, band, and food for the Memorial Day Parade. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero two. Next is a resolution to authorize an agreement for professional planning services between the village of Nelson Cole and Boris Alalseed. We have a copy of that, we've reviewed this last month as well.
be working with a comprehensive plan, but anytime somebody submits plans to change something, it's going to be reviewed by the planner before it even gets to the building department to see if it's within our code and meets the vision of the village.
This is also a firm with Bonnie Franson who will be working directly with our comprehensive committee. She will also be including the zoning in that piece as well, and she will be chairing that committee. So she will be in attendance at every meeting and working directly with the group monthly.
Do you want to mention a start date? Is there a start date?
We're starting June, I need the calendar, if somebody has the calendar, it's that we are now, you know, we did, there were two zoning board meetings per month, which is not necessary, we just recently learned, so we eliminated the third Thursday of every month. The third Thursday of every month is no longer called to be for ZBA. We're going to keep it the first Thursday and the third Thursday will now become our comprehensive committee meetings. So starting June, I believe it's the 15th.
Fifteen.
We haven't selected the committee yet, due to the deadline that has not arrived yet for anyone who's interested in remaining on the committee, you did have to previously be part of the committee prior. But we are narrowing down to 20 plus, somewhere between 25, 30 committee members. Bonnie Franson chooses to work with a very small group, more condensed, of about nine total. Two of those members will be board members, one from zoning and one from the planning board. We're not going to take a seat, it's not necessarily, we're not going to take attending meetings.
So when the meetings are open, even though you may not be part of that board, those meetings are open to the public like any other village meeting since it is part of village governance. You're welcome to come sit in, the audience listen. You can always give written comments, but at the end of the day, it's going to be those nine people who are going to be shaping the vision for our village.
In addition to that, at the end of the meetings, as Susan indicated, you can certainly put something in writing, but if you're at the meetings and you obviously would like to add a comment or a suggestion, that'll be available at the, towards the end of the meeting. So this way at least the group can concentrate on business at hand and if there's audience here, which would be fantastic, then again, you'll be able to add, make a comment, suggestion at the end of the meeting. Because really what we're trying to do is keep this as transparent as can be so that everybody knows what's going on month by month. So it's not like closed meetings and then all of a sudden in four months you're going to get a meeting and then you're going to say, what happened and I didn't, wasn't aware of this, and this, that, and the other thing. So again, having them open to the public, I think, is the right thing to do. We're all, you know, basically on the same page with that, with the transparency, because, you know, this will be something set in stone for the next 15, 20 years, percent. It will be reviewed potentially every five years with modifications, so we want to, we want to obviously do the right thing for everybody and have all the public comment that we possibly can get. Thank you.
Are they being paid for the services?
Who?
Nelson Pope? Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
I just didn't know if you disclosed or... Plan to plan basis or the other retainer?
The retainer for the comprehensive plan came in at 89,000. The previous company that was doing the comprehensive plan came in at 80. The biggest difference again that we saw was is that with company, the first company, it was really just the comprehensive plan, period. With this company, you have the comprehensive plan and the zoning.
And with this company, there will be a planner at every single meeting.
Right, that's the biggest thing.
Working with the residents.
Right.
So and just so you know, when the planner has to appear before the planning board or the ZBA, those fees are billed to the applicant, it's no burden on the village finances.
Right. Good point. Okay, so we had a second on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion passes three, zero, two extensions. Just a few announcements, Knights of Columbus Carnival will be on the 25th through the 29th over at Vern Allen Park, so please, you know, get an opportunity to come down, it supports the Knights of Columbus. Also, Memorial Day will be the 29th, that's a Monday. Kickoff of the parade is about 10 o'clock from the high school and ends up at Memorial, at the Memorial Park. And there'll be refreshments, hot dogs and water and stuff like that afterwards, so if you can attend that, that would be wonderful. This year's parade is, what's that word?
Grand marshal's.
The grand marshal's. The grand marshal's will be the VFW and the entire group. So we're trying to make this a little bit special for them. Some people are stepped up with a trailer per se, with some decorations and hopefully we can get some other things that we've, we've made some inquiries to Stewart Air Base, but at the end of the day, it's really for all the vets and be they ambets, you've got Korean, you know...
Desert Storm.
Desert Storm, Gulf, you know, all of it. And we're trying to, you know, get as much participation from anybody who wants to walk that's been in the armed services. And thank them for obviously everything they've done, especially the ones that lost their lives. The other, let's see, the other, we have a village-wide garage sale which is coming up this weekend, right? 5:20 and it's Saturday and Sunday, so do you want to add anything to, any information on that?
We wait for permits, we are doing the map, originally we were not going to do the map, but we had a volunteer who offered to create the map for anyone who wants to participate. I'll ask you in a second if we still add addresses on there, I know they went up as far as today, we keep getting more residents that want to participate. So it's this Saturday and Sunday. In the past, you always, I think you needed to do both days, you don't in this case, and you know, we will post the list of all the addresses and they will become part of the map that will be posted as well as soon as we get it together. You want to answer that, Julie? You're doing the map?
Yeah, so I can take up addresses up until Wednesday night, last fall, noon Thursday.
Up until, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Wednesday night, she said.
Wednesday night?
Yes, up to Wednesday night, like absolute last is Thursday and noon.
Okay.
Okay? And I just wanted to add that in the past, our maps have just included addresses, random addresses, who was there, whatever, if they sent their address, they were number one, number two, number three. What I'm doing different is I'm grouping them, so it'll start somewhere probably Goshen Avenue.
You're clustering by area?
Right, as like one, and then as we go to different areas, those areas will be two, three, four, five, then you can jump to another area, you know, so that they're pretty consistent. You can go right to an area and see all those addresses together.
Thank you.
And anyone that's participating, you can put out a lawn sign, you could put, they're not doing that, but if you choose to, have one else.
So we've also encouraged local businesses to do sidewalk sales that day. So it really is village-wide and it's inclusive of our little downtown as well.
And that, Christine, did that go into the, is that going into the town center record?
It didn't go in. No, I don't know.
Is it something that would go in with?
We've never put that in the paper, no. You can put it online.
In the newspaper?
I can post to a bunch of Facebook sites and...
We can...
Send it on to the newspaper.
Because I've heard a lot of other municipality, residential, other areas come.
Yeah, they come on there often. I mean, as far as I know, I normally don't handle that, but it's never gone into the newspaper.
No, I've done it on the EAs.
Killah wants to send me like more of the details of the...
Okay.
The nature of the yard.
Great, that'd be, that'd be helpful.
Awesome.
And we share across all the Washingtonville sites anyway, it's on our website, so.
For outside of the, the garage sales and the...
You mean the signs?
No.
No, they're...
No, they never did here.
No?
No.
It's just word of mouth.
Or Facebook sites.
Okay.
And then it hasn't passed here.
Not with us.
No, we've never put it in there. I don't know what I'm going to say.
Okay.
It's about the word. Yeah.
Any other questions on any announcements or anything? Any audience? Okay. So we just need an authorization, a resolution authorizing budget transfers, amendments as necessary to effect necessary transfers of funds and to pay warrants. Have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, with two extensions. Okay, so we're at the end of our meeting for public comments, if anybody has anything? Sure.
So Julie, around San Diego, Main Street, so many people know we have a new driveway. We need to seal coating, so I'd like to give notice somehow, seal coating, we're going to do the whole length, all the way up to the Village Water Department. So it's going to take either 24 or 48 hours that you cannot go on it. So I need to work with you and your water department as to a date, maybe the next month, that we can close the, you know, my driveway. We can certainly let you guys park on our lawn somewhere, on our front by our mailbox, but it won't be able to be crossed, so I need to verify dates with you that there's no deliveries, no, you know, things like that, your landscaper doesn't come.
So maybe, maybe a Friday, because there's, we don't have all weekend to dry, and it doesn't need all weekend, but at least there'll be no traffic on it. If you could potentially do it on a Friday, we could alert, Chris, would you mind talking to Chris F? Thank you.
I want to try and do it in the next month, so like sometime in June.
That's fine.
Okay?
Yeah.
And by chance, do you guys do anything for the maintenance of that, you're kicking anything or, you know, just for the end of it, you know, towards your section that we don't really use? Just to know, yes.
I need to know, well, it's a right-of-way, correct?
It is.
I mean, we could take that off-line and figure out where the line might be at the end of the day, but if it isn't, I mean, it's your property, but let me check with the attorney.
Okay, because you guys put in the, you know, you paved the driveway?
Yeah.
So you normally plow it, you somewhat maintain it, we do what we can, so I don't know what's been done in the past, we're okay to do it, but I just wanted to find out.
So your seal coating though is going to be just on your...
It's the whole.
I know it's a right-of-way, but you're planning on doing that road as well?
The whole thing, yeah. They weed it, they take up the weeds, they power wash everything.
Okay.
It's supposed to really strengthen it and keep it lasting better, I guess, for years.
Yeah, just make a note, I'll talk to our attorney, maybe you can, Chris, maybe mention it to Brian tomorrow? That'll do.
Yeah, the majority of, I think it was like our, our plot was about 1850 for the whole, the whole thing.
Right.
It's like 24 hundred square feet of driveway.
Okay.
So it's really nothing, but I just figured, I don't know if you have any, you know, anything that you can get, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So any other public comment? Okay. With no other comment, any trustees have anything to discuss? Okay. So to our new trustees, welcome aboard. They were a little quiet tonight because it's first day on the job and not really potentially too comfortable with the agenda of knowing what was going on, so they'll be vocal and 100% in come our next meeting in June, I think it's 5th is our next meeting, so. Welcome aboard, yes, and we'll get your plaques and emails.
Their legs, their waist.
And all that fun stuff, so.
Good stuff, good stuff.
So if there's no further comment, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion? You got it down?
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, everybody.